You go ahead and get in, we'll step out the way.
Hey, how are you, sir?
I, Albert Davis.
I, Albert Davis.
Do something this way.
Do something this way.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
Duties of thou.
The duties of this office.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
And willing to the best of my ability.
And willing to the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties thou.
To discharge the duties thou.
And preserve, protect, and defend.
To preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
And of the United States.
And of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I do something this way.
Do something this way.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of thy office.
The duties of thy office.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
And I will faithfully execute.
And I will faithfully execute.
The duties of thy office.
The duties of thy office.
And discharge the duties thou.
And discharge the duties thou.
And preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
And of the United States.
And of the United States.
The election of officers, do we have any nominations? Our chair?
I nominate Mr. Bobby Housen.
Is that correct? Any other nominations? Any others on that? Mr. Davis. The motion on the floor is for Mr. Hudson. For remaining as chairman for a third term, I believe? Fourth term, excuse me. I have Mr. Cook and I have Mr. Davis.
Aye.
I have Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Hudson takes over, he will hold the gavel, please. The clerk was holding that for us. We can go ahead and start the vice chairman nomination.
Nominate Louis Brown.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Thomas? Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Okay, so we're going to have Lee and Frank. Second. I think that he had four, right? David, Albert, Mr. Bobby, Mr. Thomas, and myself. So we go to Mr. Lewis.
Yeah, I'm going to be clear on the votes, you can record it. You had two nominations on the floor, Mr. Brown and Mr. Flowers. And Rick, you need to do a roll call vote, it's supposed to be recorded.
Roll call. Roll call. Mr. Brown. Davis.
Mr. Brown?
Aye, Mr. Brown.
Brown. Brown. Flowers. Flowers. So you got two flowers, yeah, two flowers and five, Frank.
Just want to make sure she gets your call.
All right, so at this time then you can change seats. Let me see the gavel. Give them time to get settled in. All right, now we have a public hearing.
Chat.
A chat. I nominate Danny.
Second.
Second. Okay, any other? If not, we'll roll call. David.
Aye.
Mr. Douglas. Mr. Douglas. Okay, now, I think that's taken care of that business. Let's move forward to the public hearing. And this will be three A. Lease renewal agreement with Linda M. Fairclough to lease certain space in Robert Hill's Room Building for Prosperity Childcare Center. Robert Hill Room Building is located at 528 Corvusville Highway, North South Carolina. Does anyone wish to speak to this public hearing? If not, I declare public hearing three A closed. Public hearing three B. Lease renewal agreement with Linda M. Fairclough to lease certain space in Robert Hill's Room Building from Prosperity Childcare Center. Robert Hill Room Building is located at 528 Corvusville Highway, North South Carolina. Does anyone wish to speak to this three B of renewal? If not, I declare three B closed. And three C. Lease agreement with Jacqueline Dubois to lease certain spaces in Society Hill Neighborhood Center for jumping to new heights program. Gold Ditch Society Hill Center is located at 223 Hall Street, Society Hill, South Carolina. Does anyone wish to speak on this public hearing? If not, I declare this lease agreement closed. Now we move to invocation and pledge of allegiance. Mr. Douglas and Mr. Brown.
Father God, I just want to thank you, oh Lord, for last year's and beginning of a new year. And Father God, we just want to thank you, oh Lord, for last night rest and a thing of touch and awaken of love this morning. And Father God, we just want to thank you, oh Lord, for starting us on a new day and closing our right now. And Father, we asking you today to bless each and every one that has attended today, oh Lord. And Father God, we ask to bless the ones that could attend and did not attend. And Father God, we asking you today to go with foreign country. We asking you to touch our boys, girls, men, and women. Give them some foresight of seeing of coming home one day. And Father God, we asking you today, oh Lord, to lead us and guide us to this meeting in your name sake. Amen.
Amen.
United States of America. And in the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible liberty and justice of all.
All right, so is in comments, eight or two minutes, and we'll start with Mr. James Lee Miller.
Is it okay if we come to the microphone?
My name is James Lee Miller, I live at 503 Flavio D. Dry, Hartsville. My main concern about the drainage area, we have a lot of water standing around, you know, the neighborhood. All because the ditch is not clean. And it backs up. And trying to get someone to come out there and clean the ditches out to have more drainage for of my property.
And outside, I like to say, not only of our property, as I ride around through the South Hartsville section, the water is back up throughout the communities in that area. And I, we've been coming before the council over the years requesting that we get some type of help with the drainage problem in the South Hartsville area. And I know we have ditches and things, but I definitely believe that we need more than that. Yet we need, we need a complete drainage system for that area. And as you know, as citizens, we do know it costs. But I do believe that as a kind, that we could do better than we doing for the Hartsville, that District Six area, or South Hartsville. Uh, we, uh, we have had, I know, a lot of times people say this only occur during storm time or whatever, but from year to year, we don't know what's going to happen when it comes to hurricanes, floods, snow. Even when we have excess snow, we have backup. So we are just standing in, for the District Six of Darlington County requesting help, immediate help, because there are persons, the water is so high, the table water is so high, it's difficult for them even to get in the yards now. And the grass where you, where the water has built up some, even if you don't see the water, the ground is still soaking.
Okay, thank you. Charles, this is part of the fraud, like we've been looking at with Bobby. Okay, all right, I hope we need to.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Glanis, Wingate?
I am coming to just make an announcement. The Center for Heirs Property, which is out of Charleston, South Carolina, will come to Darlington County and offer their free services for us if we have enough people that are interested in Heirs Property. A lot of people think it's just African Americans, but it's not. It's for people that, this is what, for everyone that doesn't understand the law, may not have a good understanding of the law, and they wind up having appropriated property and can't afford it, and they need legal help. So if we can get enough people that are interested in, in the Center for Heirs Property, they will come to us. Right now, they're in Allendale, Vanburg, Blueford, Berkeley, Charleston, Clarendon, Colliton, Dorchester, Georgetown, Hampton, Jasper, Orangeburg, Sumter, and Williamsburg Counties. So all we need is a few people. They said even if two or three of us, you know, like two or three of us are gathered in one name, they will come. And the services are free. If, if anyone is interested, you can just go to heirspropy.com to find out about the services they offer. And I have a telephone number if anyone wants to take the telephone number down, if you're interested in contacting them.
What is, what is that?
Okay, the telephone.
Ms. Wingate, if you need any help from a local lawyer, just give me a call.
Thank you, Mr. Kilgore. We'll call you tomorrow.
Ma'am, can you spell that word?
Um, Heirs, H-E-I-R-S. And it's under Heirs Property, H-E-I-R-S-P-R-O-P-R-T-Y dot org. They're in Charleston, and the telephone number is eight four three seven four five seven zero five five. What's wonderful is that all the services are absolutely free.
They are. And it's an absolute, it is, it is a necessity.
It really is.
And I feel glad to be a local contact.
Thank you, Mr. Kilgore, I'm gonna call you tomorrow.
Okay. I believe I heard your voice just go off.
I feel joy. I feel delight being the president of this initiation here tonight of these terms as such, with the understanding though, that I have more trust, more faith than previously. And with the understanding that what I receive for what I had at present from your ministry of the rich, that they left me on a good road of success for the problem my neighbor just discussed with the flooding that I have, being my neighbor, that I see continuously when it rains. And that now, the problem that we have, and what I have seen, ladies and gentlemen, that the problem does not just end where highly, the whole South section, between the city, the county, and the state. And this is what, one of the goals that we're going to have to work on with our problem that we have in South Section of Hartsville. And we know it's not free, and we know it's not an overnight episode, what we need to be corrected in the South section. And this is something that we have never have had, communication problem with the county on our situation. Right now, I have strong faith in what I see and who am I, oh, that I am looking at here, that we could be more successful in getting this problem that we have now corrected. So we ask each and every one of y'all to have confidence that we can say we have trust in you all with our problem. I expect that you continue, whatever, however, whoever, whatever it takes of to participate with our problem, please notify us as well as we will be looking to get in contact with each and every one of you. So thank you, and thank you more times than once.
Sir, and I'll be looking at you every day tonight, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's move on to the Senate agenda. Mr. Olufsen, Commission for the Board of Minutes, standing in a page November 1st, December 7, 2018. Need approval? In second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, aye's have it. Approval of minutes, eight days, minutes of public hearing in regular meeting, December 3, 2018. Move to approve. In second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, aye's have it. Ordinance number eighteen dash four. An ordinance, or me, an ordinance number eighteen over four, fiscal year eighteen nineteen, hourly budget to add new additional revenue and two new employee positions and establish effective date of this order. Need a motion?
Move to approve.
In second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye's have it. Resolutions, we have none. We need a report, have none. Going to other items, according to boards and commissions, we bill favorcy in expired terms. Got to be a carryover to make. Just breathe flowers, you get a carryover. All right, carryover mine, Mr. Davis.
I'd like to point Ms. Louise Williams back, Mr. Lawrence Manning, to the Board of Assessment Appeal, and Mr. Clarence Brunson, to the Construction Board.
All right, need a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye's have it. Mr. Brown.
I'd like to reappoint Samuel Phillips to the Construction Board of Adjustments.
He's second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye's have it. Mr. Coker.
I'll carry mine, everybody.
Carry it. Well, being twenty nineteen scheduled, a county council meeting, page ninety-one. Need a motion?
Move the approval of schedule.
In second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, aye's have it. Twelve C. Lease renewal agreement with Louine Baker to lease Lake Darpo Caretaker's House in exchange for stipulated caretaker service and rent. Lake Darpo Caretaker House is located at 190 Lake Darpo Road, North South Carolina.
I make a motion to review.
Second.
In second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye's have it. Twelve D. Lease renewal agreement with Linda M. Fairclough to lease certain space in Robert Hill Room Building or Prosperity Childcare Center. Robert Hill Room Building is located at 528 Corvusville Highway, North South Carolina. Need a motion?
Make a motion to be second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, aye's have it. Now, we have a carryover here.
The administration's requesting a carryover, that one piece of documentation was supposed to come in, did not make it in, we're going to have to carry.
I leave a motion.
So moved.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Opposed, aye's have it.
All right, we're going to, well, here. Year awards replacement of HVA C, Connaissance Line of Courthouse. Need a motion? Need a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, is this the only bid we received?
The only bid we received to do this was the.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Thomas, you have any things?
Well, I was asked in the seat here, I did have a question. This was in reference to the number of bids too, that's why I wanted to know. So this, this is the end of the bidding process on the.
Only, only one responsible bidder responded.
Yes. Wow, that's it, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, aye's have it. Approve holiday schedule for landfill and solid waste collection recycling centers, page one twenty-six. Need a motion?
I make a motion to just accept the pose.
Need a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, aye's have it. All right. Mr. Stewart, Administrator Pote.
One thing I have for you tonight is I will give you a little heads up. I hope I don't cause a problem. Jinxing ourselves, we've had trouble getting audits completed for a few years now. We had a two-year backlog one time in sixteen, the first time here, but we have the draft of the audit. We're going through that draft, making sure all the typos are out, any of this type thing. And we hope to present you with the county's audit in February. I don't believe that's going to be a problem. The numbers won't change.
When you say, didn't we?
Every week.
That all?
That's all I have for you tonight.
Okay.
We're. Any specific questions?
I just want to know, do you have a work schedule, plan for anything?
Any work sessions?
Yes, sir.
I have a plan, y'all, y'all have to set a work session. I'll ask you for one for budget time, but I'm not ready, I'm not ready to ask for that yet. You talking about a work session for y'all to discuss matters? Y'all have to set that.
Okay. All right, request, comment, members of council. Mr. Coker.
Um, I just, two thousand and eighteen was an interesting year. It was tough, we had floods, we had hurricanes, all kind of things. I just want to commend our emergency responders and all the staff for a really good job. I really appreciate that you came up here when we had the big flood and watched you guys in action, it was really, it was really neat to see. I just want to thank everybody for what they do, always helping me in anything I ever need. Want to congratulate Mr. Davis and look forward to working with him and just look forward to a great new year.
Ladies?
Thanking to the citizen of Darlington County for giving me this opportunity to serve you in years six. From the bottom of my heart, thanking each and every one of you, thank my wife, my mother-in-law, my family, to the sinners of my Lord and First Lady of my Lord for their words of wisdom, to the ladies of Darlington County, to the millions of Darlington County. We're all of you, we're here for you, we work at your place. But again, thank you from the bottom of my heart for each and every one of y'all. Thank you to the members of council for accepting me, for your phone calls, for your prayers. I looking forward to working with each and every one of y'all. Thank you.
Douglas?
Okay. I've never in my life seen as much water, as much rain, that we had the last three months. We all catching it by the sword. The way it's going, we ain't got no way to put it. Every day, I don't know how many calls I don't get, wanting to come out and look at the world, the drainage and stuff like that. The ditch is full, the little creek's full, we ain't got no way to put the water. I just don't know what we're doing, I reckon we have to go out of bounds, look back, look, listen. And just let it flow. As you do in Fisher.
I just want to welcome Mr. Davis in your decision run. It can be challenging, but it certainly can be rewarding. You'll serve people in your district well, in the county as well. I'd like to echo what Mr. Coker said, it's been, eighteen was a very challenging year, but I do want to commend, we saw it, starting with first hurricane. The EOC operation was, I was extremely impressed. I've been extremely impressed and pleased by the staff, the willingness, going out, and just everybody's, I think each of us are battling a lot of issues. I think we asked, is your patience, some of these things are trying to find solutions that just aren't at our disposal. But Mr. Stewart has been more than receptive on calls and helping us, so it's challenging, we're working at it. It's tough to sit here and tell you we don't have an answer. And to see somebody's heat pump underwater not work, it's not fun, like those visits, but that's our job. There's a lot of compassion for people with hardships, sort of wish we had a quick fix, but we ask that you be patient with us, and I know Mr. Stewart, his team will do the best they can. Thanks to members of council for the support. Look forward to this coming year. We're very blessed in this county in very many ways, and you don't have to go far to see how fortunate we are, so. Happy New Year to everyone, and look forward to two thousand and nineteen.
And I'd just like to say, two thousand and eighteen was a challenging year, but we got through it in spite of some concerns and difficulties we had, especially with weather and infrastructure. I would like to see us work closer with PD Cal in reference to obtaining some type of grants, you know, in reference to the infrastructure. And people are hurting because of flooding, and I tell you, we've had more than I would share, and other counties have had that too. But I think we can look towards.
But I think we can look towards resolving, at least working on it, and let the people know that we are trying, we just haven't forgotten them, you know. And for two thousand and nineteen, we'll be ready, willing, and able to be a team, continue being a team. And I enjoy the environment that we have here together, and I certainly would hope that it will continue since I'm, no sexist, but since I'm on the female up here. And men, you won't have a challenge with me, not yet, but I mean, we're gonna work together, we're gonna get the job done. Right, Mr. Koch?
This is right.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Kilgore?
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Davis, I welcome you aboard and look forward to working with you. Ms. Thomas brought up the idea of a work session. I think it's always wise when you've got a new council to schedule at least a half-day work session so that that person's not left out in the, in the, in the dark. With everything that we had talked about last year, I think it'd be wise if we did schedule a half-day work session. With that, I look forward to another year.
Let me just say, Mr. Davis, congratulations. If you need to do anything, call here for us, or we've got our phone number. Call Charles, a lot of times he'll tell Charles what we need. You may not see him, but he's always working in the background getting things done. I want to thank the employees of Darlington County, all of them, an outstanding job to do for the citizens of Darlington County. And that, you know, it's, like you say, it's challenging with the war that it has been, but I can rest assured that we are still out there working. May, you may not think so, but we are. We're out here working for everyone in Darlington County. And I'd say, hope you have a happy new year, hope you have a good two thousand and nineteen. On that note, we don't have any executive sessions, or we need to...
No, you don't have, but I do want to ask a question. Would you like for us to try to begin scheduling a work session for February, January, or would you like February? I would think, let the chairman decide what he wants to do.
We're gonna have the budget, we in next sometime, you know.
It'll be the April meeting.
It'll be April. I would say sometime around the middle of February, we'll schedule for a half-day. And we can, at the same place.
Will we turn and start working on it?
Right.